Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody doing? I had to stop and pause for a sec. I just dropped my kid off at school and we've been... It was a fun conversation. He's a 14-year-old and I'm gonna kill him.
You can't do that.
It really...I'm sorry. I'm gonna hold his head underwater and pull him up, just in the nick of time. So now I gotta get my speaking points down that I was trying to come in here and talk about. So first of all, appreciate y'all being here, just taking the time out of your day. When the...we always ask though, you know, when you see the invitations come out for this, if you have anything that you want to talk about, send them to us. So we didn't get anything. So it just means that we get to do improvisation for the entire time. But really, for the biggest point that I wanted to talk to you about is I try to talk about a little bit higher level, almost strategy for the organization in my thing and then get out of the way and let the actual entertaining speakers come up here. A lot of what we're doing right now though is just simply focusing on us right now. There's a lot of things that are going on in our surrounding areas, which is typically what we look at for growth. You've got a lot of houses that are being built in White House. A lot of houses being built in White House. And so, we're sitting back looking at that from a marketing standpoint, but we don't want to be too soon. So if they talk about 700 homes being built and they're still pushing around dirt to, you know, the place that it's gonna be done, the last thing that you want to do is go out there with a whole lot of money and spend and things and put it out there and then go, "Okay, now let's just wait for the people to move into these homes." So we are going to be looking more and more at the White House side of the market, but also, we're really excited about the Lowe's Distribution Center coming into Cooper Town. That's 600 jobs, if you look at the average family size. If you want to multiply that by 2.7, that's how many people would be estimated to come in there, but they're not gonna be fully staffed at 600 people until the year 2020. So, you know, you...obviously Pleasant View is an anchored market for us as well, and so we want to be aware of that and cognizant of that, but you're not gonna see us go in there full bore right now. You want to try and time it with everything. So as you see these different things, I don't want you to think that we're sitting back going, "Well, you know, that's wonderful." I promise you, we're not missing the boat on those. I just...I'm not gonna do the Field of Dreams. I'm not Kevin Costner. We're not gonna build it and they'll come. We'll let them go and then we'll come in behind them. But they are very, very important places for us. They're important markets for us. It's important communities for us. And so, we will be looking at those and making sure that we understand them and know what levels of service. I can actually tell you that the mayor of Pleasant View, when he sat down with the Lowe's Distribution Center, he let them know that we were already there, that he was gonna be talking with us. The city...so, they asked us to come and talk with them at their city council meeting, and they basically said, "The only healthcare group that we want here is Northcrest Medical Center. We like your reputation. We like where you are. We like what you do. And I'll let you look on a map and see what other hospitals were around them that they could've gone to and asked." So it's always nice to get that. And so, that allows me to segue into a thank you again to y'all. And I know that sometimes when you say thanks so much, they start to sound fake, and I really don't want that to come across that way. But very, very appreciative of everything that y'all do every single day. I cannot say enough. I do not take care of a single patient. Every now and then, when I'm coming in the front door or the back door, I will find some family member or patient lost, and I will say, "Hey, where are we going?" And welcome to it. That is pretty well the extent of my interaction with patients. So it's everything that y'all do every single day. It is things like groups of you who come to me and thank you, because it really makes it easy when I don't have to sit in my office and come up with ideas. When you come to me with something, and most recently it was, "We're so close to Fort Campbell, we want to be military friendly." It's not like I went out and researched that and went, "Hey, what is..." No, someone else did. They were passionate about it. They brought it forward. It is so easy for me, as a CEO, to go, "Okay, what roadblocks and hurdles are keeping you from doing that?" And they're like, "Well, I need a little bit of time, clear it on my schedule. We need to do this, this, and this. Who do I need to talk to to get these pieces of information? Here's the application. Here's the things I don't know." Great. This person knows this information. This person knows this one, and run with it. And because of that, we are designated as military friendly. Now, what does that mean? Right? Just another award or accolade? No. What it means is in all the military publications, when people are coming off their deployments and they're looking to get out of the military, they pull up these magazines, they pull up these websites, and they go, "Well, who supports me? If I'm gonna go into the reserves or the National Guard, who works around my schedule? Who gives me my weekends off and my two weeks out of the year in the summer and accommodates that? Right? If you're a military spouse, who works around my spouse's deployment? Who works with me to do all these things? And by the way, who delivers care to military members, takes their insurance, and does everything that's appropriate to them? Those are all the things that went into that." So sometimes when you see the little badge that we may put on our website or be on the bottom of my email, there's a lot of things that go into that. And again, all I had to do was get out of the way, because y'all are passionate about delivering care to the community and doing the right thing for the community that sometimes extends even beyond the actual care delivery. And so, since the last time we spoke, you know, the new LeapFrog grades have come out. And if anyone ever asks you about LeapFrog, by the way, the reason that we really tout LeapFrog, you can't buy it. There are a lot of surveys out there, not surveys, but we'll just say awards, that for $10,000, you can be the number one something. You can win this. Well, LeapFrog doesn't do that. What they do is they do independent ratings and rankings, but they look at everything from your nurse staffing ratios to what's your leadership involvement with everyone? Do you report quality scores, all the way from town hall meetings to your board? Do you go out into the community and let people know things? Are you transparent? Are you accurate? And then they look at your readmission rates, your pressure ulcers, you know, all your core measures, all these things, and then they give you a grade. So we're very excited about being an A LeapFrog. Now, is there an opportunity to spend money with them? Sure. What they do is they do the ratings and they put it out there and say, "By the way, if you want to use the logo of LeapFrog, it has a cost." But you don't have to, right? So you're not really buying the score. You're buying the ability to advertise your score. Little different. So that is...we're really excited about that, but also, again, it comes back to the fact that I don't do any of that y'all do. And so, it really is just an endorsement of everything that you do. So finally with that, I just want to let you know too, that we have started the Employee Advisory Council, and you should've seen some emails that have come out about that. Really support them. And really support that idea if you want to. We actually want some feedback about that, so that you can understand exactly how we're attempting to use the Employee Advisory Council. There are too many things within this organization that are still residual from what we talked about before, the old command and control model, which is that the CEO sits in the office and must be the smartest person ever, anointed, that can know everything and have the answers to everything. Well, it's not. It just means that the CEO position used to be really, really good at making arbitrary decisions and make them confidently. So I don't know if y'all know this, but I was in the military for a little while and I was a parachute rigger, which means that you pack parachutes and do all sorts of kinda stuff. The motto was, "I'll be sure always." And all the way that you went through training, it didn't matter, they'd come up and ask you a question. It didn't matter if you knew the answer, just say it confidently, because you're a parachute rigger and you should be sure always. And so, they'd walk up and they'd talk about a piece of equipment that was on a parachute, and they're like, "And what is the tensile strength of that? 10,000 pounds per square inch." Great answer, right? It was totally wrong, but as long as you said it confidently, because that was the motto, "I'll be sure always." So I like to think I was well-trained to be a CEO, right? Because you would come in and go, "Hey, this nursing issue, clinical issue, this physician issue, I just gave a strong confident answer. Lo and behold, that must be right." No. So what ended up happening is we would strongly and confidently give an answer, and then you would go out there and go, "Well, that won't work, so now we have to do two jobs. One is convince the CEO he was right. The other is actually provide the care and the whatever we need to do in our job the proper way." Right? So I gotta get out of the way. That's what the Employee Advisory Council is about. It's when things come across my desk, instead of me making a completely arbitrary decision, it's actually to take it out and have a conversation among the employees. And the most recent thing that's come out is about the dress code. Y'all, I take my tie off on Fridays. That's it. So guess what kind of dress code I would like to have? Okay. So, does that make sense? Maybe not. Right? And so, you've got a multi-generational workforce that you need to accommodate, right? Because I know if I want to get the right answer, and I say, "Right answer," I know who to go ask the questions to. "Hey, would you support that we go back to all the nurses wearing white and wearing hats again?"
No.
Uh-huh. But I bet I could...I bet I'd know the right person that I could go talk to to go, "Yes." Right? So we really...we've got to do that. Otherwise, it is just me sitting in an office making an arbitrary decision, which it doesn't do anything. So when you see these emails coming out about the Employee Advisory Council, it's...this is not like the student council in high school where we're gonna have pizza every day and extend recess for an hour. Right? We're making legitimate...these are honest-to-goodness things that have crossed my desk that impact all the employees that we are bringing to them. And we are saying, "Make the decision. My job will be to implement it." And then when the decision is made, just so that you know, what I tell them is, "Do you want this to come out that says that the Employee Advisory Council did this, or do you just want me to take it?" Because there are certain things that, you know, maybe they don't want to be just beat up in their departments about, but the other is that you also, if you talk with them, you can find out, we're bringing a lot of information to them. And these decisions are hard. So I'm also trying to do the thing where I don't completely abdicate my responsibility. I mean, if it comes down to the time to where it really is an arbitrary decision, well, that's what I get paid to do, and I'll make it if I have to. So support them, participate. There's opportunities. There's some seats that are available on there that you're gonna be hearing about. It gives you a voice. Talk to them. See if it's legitimate. See if it's a good use of your time. I think you would find that it would be. So y'all are what makes us successful. We're gonna try and continue working to give you a voice, working with you on the decisions. And you're obviously...you've got a great track record of doing everything well, so I'm confident in putting my faith in you all to get those done. So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Kim, and then we'll, at the end, ask her any questions.
Good morning, everybody. Now that Randy's warmed you up, y'all ready to do some math? All right. So what month we in? So we've just closed January. How many months are we into our fiscal year? Seven. Seven out of 12. What's that percentage? Come on, come on, come on. I'm kidding, I don't even know that one either. I'm just seeing how smart y'all are. So I thought, "Oh, I'm gonna be Bana White today." And I thought, "No, this probably isn't Bana White. This is more like The Price is Right. Here's all these numbers. Please don't imagine me. Do not film this part, but don't imagine me in a bathing suit." Why are y'all laughing? All right. What do you think these numbers represent? What do we measure?
Progress.
We do. Thank you, Bonnie. We measure progress. So we have LPS goals, right? We talked about those at the first of the year, so I'm gonna give you kind of an update, since we missed our...it's been a while since we've talked. So these are in random order, despite what you think. I didn't mean to lead off with the most negative one. Freud's probably in there somewhere. These numbers represent our LPS goals. I'm gonna give them to you, and you tell me where they...we're gonna do a matching game. So we have four LPS goals, to our growth, to our financial. Our first one is our operating margin. Our operating margin measures how well we're doing operating the hospital. So it takes our revenue, our charges, what we expect to be paid from our patients and our insurance, as our operating expenses. Our operating margin. Which one of these numbers do you think is our operating margin?
13.
13. Who did 13? Man, you cheated. You look at my notes. 13. This one? I can't reach that tall. Y'all know that. I'm not jumping. 13. I'm sorry, I don't have my iron. It needed to be ironed. That's our operating margin. Good number, bad number? Very good number. A very, very good number. It means we're managing our expenses related to the revenue that we're getting in. Very good number. So our next one is our productivity. What's productivity measure? How well do we staff with the volume that we're receiving? How well are we staffing? Which one do you think is our productivity measure compared to our budget?
One.
This is a point one...that's my big old decimal. Point one percent. Correct. We're just point one percent over our budget. So we're managing appropriately. Very good. This goes back to all of us. Now, aw, dang it, what are left? The red numbers. What do you think they're measuring? So our next group that we measure is growth. So we've kind of narrowed it down now, haven't we? Our outpatient growth, excluding ED, excluding hospice, where do you think our outpatient growth is? You only got two. You got fifty. You have a chance.
Maybe five.
This is where we are with our outpatient growth. The last one that we measure is our total growth overall, our total net revenue compared to our budget. That leaves this. So what does that tell us? Just like your home life, we're doing a really good job of managing what we get, right? But compared to where we wanted to be, we're not there. Which comes...leads into what we're talking about. What are the opportunities out there? How do we go get those markets? How do we sustain what we have? That's where we are. So I should've done it the other way, so we'd lead off with the...end with the good stuff. Can I just say that this is a very, very good organization, and each of you do a fantastic job? I gotta give you...it is. We're doing very well with what we have.
I wonder how this would compare to this time last year?
That's what I was gonna say. We already...
Yeah. We just came through the holidays, and people have already spent their deductibles, and they're not gonna have the surgery over the holidays because of their in the holidays and their deductibles. And they're not gonna wanna spend that money upfront, so I wonder if we didn't compare overall, but just against where we were at this time last year.
It would be the same. We're...and I want to say that last year, we had an amazing last year. Last year was amazing when you looked at our trend line. It was. We had a great year. So this is below even what we're doing last year, unfortunately. It was good. I tried to look at that that way too, but it's not. And it may be that last year was just gonna be one of those pop years, and we're now more into a settled...now that we were regaining that growth, until we see those markets come up, where we're in a settled timeframe, where it's just kind of this instead of spiking. Only time will tell. Any other comments, questions? Can we tell you a joke? I won't. I've been banned. I'll introduce Angie, my cohort, my partner in crime.
You would think as many of these as we have done, I would learn to wear pockets, that I could put this in. So I think I know everybody in here, but anyway, I'm Angie Beard. I'm Chief Nursing and Chief Clinical Officer, so I get to end up with the good part, right? That's why I get to go last, because I have the...I have the really, really good news. Now, y'all know, I know how to speak in public and I know how to write papers and everything, but we are amongst friends. We're all friends. So I'm gonna say, "Ain't ya?" And y'all aren't gonna judge me for that, right? Because we just are who we are. All right, everybody nod. And y'all can say it too. I'm...we're cool. All right? What am I doing here, Randy?
It's warming.
Okay. It's warming up. So Kim has a joke.
No, we're good. It sticks there. It's up.
Oh, saved, just in the nick of time. So last year, last year at the beginning of the year, we talked about a campaign that we're engaged upon called Zero Patient Harm. And we're good...that we made a commitment that we were gonna measure and we were going to try to eliminate total patient harm, and how five years ago, we said that that was impossible. It's impossible to have no patient harm in a hospital. So clinical leadership sat down, and we come up with 10 items that we said that we're not gonna do this in our facility. However, if it does happen, we're gonna figure out why it happened, so that we don't have that same thing happen again. So that's what we do with our CUSP teams, is we sit down when we have a mess, when we do stub our toe, we sit down together around the table and we say, "How did this happen? And how do we avoid this from happening again?" So I want to show you how we ended up 2016. So I'm gonna go up here and stand, because I'm not gonna stand over there, because if I trip on that thing, y'all will laugh. But I might go into some cheerleader move, a roll and tumble, and just play like it's part of the script, but it really won't be, when y'all hear me scream and I can't get up. Okay. So can everybody see this? Remember, we talked about the CDIF? The CDIF is the one that's usually hospital-acquired. So we test patients when they come in for it. It's the one that has like severe diarrhea. Yeah. Y'all remember the emoji from last time. So we had...we had three cases of hospital-acquired CDIF. Now, just let me tell you, that doesn't mean that we gave three people CDIF. That's...in these cases, actually, some of these cases, we just failed to document appropriately when the patient came in. We didn't test them for it, or we didn't document that they were stoling. But anyway, we've met and met and met, and we've come up with ways that we can be better at preventing hospital-acquired CDIF, number one. Number two, how we can document better, so that we don't...so that we don't get the hit for a hospital-acquired infection. Is that clear? Next, with central line-associated bloodstream infections. Look at that. Zero. Everybody say, "Woo!" Nobody got a bloodstream infection from us. Surgical site infections. We had five. Y'all, that...I don't think there's another hospital in the nation that can say that they had five surgical site infections. Five. Now, people are gonna say, "Yeah, but we have more volume," or, "Yeah, we have less volume." One is too many. That's why we use raw numbers. We don't use a ratio of how many patients we had for patient days and all that. We use the actual raw number, because we believe every patient is individual, and we believe one patient being harmed is too many. I'll tell you that this year...this year, now, our LPS goals actually go from July to July, from July to the end of June. This is actually a calendar year. This one here, we've had one other one. So far, year-to-date, for the fiscal year, we've had two. Wow. Two. That's amazing. And y'all, I know sometimes these graphs look a little bizarre, you know? They look like, wow, because you kind of look at it and you say...but there's no graph that goes above a five yet. We'll see how the rest of them turn out. Two hospital-acquired catheter-associated urinary tract infections. Two. You know what we did with those? We sat down and once again, the CUSP team sat down and said, "How can we avoid two?" Ventilate...what happened? VAE, ventilator-associated events. So we had no ventilator-associated infections, but we had one event, and that has to do with the peep and some controls on the ventilator. So one event, but no infections. Medication errors that cause patient harm. Look at that. Zero. We did...y'all need to clap for that one. Facility-acquired pressure ulcers. We had seven acquired pressure ulcers. Seven's too many. Once again, many of these were from documentation. Some of the staff wasn't documenting their assessments. They weren't documenting their assessment when the patient arrived. They weren't documenting on their shifts. Some of them actually were hospital-acquired. This CUSP team is very active in the reduction of hospital-acquired pressure ulcers. Falls with injury. Three falls resulted in injury. Three. Three's too many. But I would...so I looked back actually to 2009, I think is when we started tracking falls, but we did not track falls with injury, so I can't give you a comparison of where we were to where we are today. But I can tell you that next year, we can compare these numbers to this year and see if we've improved. Obstetrical deliveries with less than 39 weeks. Venus thromboembolism, that means blood clots, hospital-acquired blood clots. How many did we have? Now, this is a little different. This is our sepsis core measure. This is a new core measure that just came out this year that every hospital is struggling with. Our hospitals group, our ER group works...and our quality group works together to try to get us to where we are at 100% compliance with our severe sepsis and septic shock. And so, I wanted to show you that in the first quarter and the second quarter, here's what our facility is at, here's what the state and the nation are at. Look at that. We're 30% above. And here, they're getting a little bit better, and so we're getting a little bit...we got a little bit worse. I think there's 126 elements to this measure. That's how many elements there are. Something as simple as documenting an end time on an IV fluid bolus. So it's a very, very difficult measure, but I wanted to bring it to your attention that we're not doing so well with that one, but we're working to improve that. Now, let me tell you something else that happened yesterday. Do y'all know what THA is? THA is the Tennessee Hospital Association. So some of their staff members came down yesterday, and they had lunch with our CUSP leaders and myself, and we sat down and we had lunch together and we talked, and everybody in the room talked about the CUSP team that they're on and the one...or that they lead. And they sat there and they listened to us, and they said, "Y'all are the best hospital that has this model, and we want you to invite other hospitals to your hospital and teach them how you do it, because some hospitals don't get it." And they asked us, "Would we be willing to let other hospitals come in and sit down in a meeting with us and listen to how we do things?" And we said, "Absolutely. We want transparency. We don't mind showing our warts, and we don't mind showing how to get...other hospitals how to improve. We would love to do that." The other thing they did was they invited us, they invited one of our CUSP teams, they said, "All of them are great." They asked us to choose one to come to the state meeting in April and do a presentation for Northcrest Medical Center on how we've improved quality through our CUSP teams and through programs like this. The other thing they asked us to do was participate in a nationwide quality measure that comes out of Chicago, and they asked us, "Would we be willing to participate in that as well?" And we said, "Absolutely." They want us to get on calls with hospitals across the nation and tell them how we've reduced our infections and our hospital harm. Y'all, that's...that's pretty amazing. Now, I know y'all can't see this, but this is...y'all remember when you took...I know, I know. But, so, you probably are hearing this in staff meetings and on your communication boards, but what this is, is I just wanted to bring it to your attention, what this is, it's, you know, in the fall, we do that patient safety survey, that ARC survey that everybody's asked to do, and I just wanted to point out to you that you can't, even though you can't see it, and there was no way that I could make the numbers to where you could see them without doing like a dozen more slides, and, you know, it's real early. But I just want to tell you that we can go back now, all the way back to, what is that, 2009, something like that, I don't know, I brought the actual paper, if y'all want me to pass it around. Yeah, 2009. We can go back down to 2009 and see how we've done as far as our patient safety and what you all's perception of that patient safety is. Here you go. Besides those numbers, once again, we'll put this on communication boards and staff meetings. Just let me tell you that we exceed the Tennessee State on all of those measures of patient safety, that we do better. Now, I just wanted to point that out to you, that we're improving on that arena as well. Okay? And that's the end. Do y'all have any questions about anything that I've discussed or went over? Did I bore y'all? I'm sorry. It's not boring, that's some good stuff.
Good job, everybody.
Yeah. That, oh, they're hot. That's what we're here for. That's what we're here for. So, that's the end, and we're ready for trivia, whenever you're ready, Mr. Davis.